Okay, so it is 5:11 and we're going to call the meeting to order. And if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to enter into executive session. I'm wondering if we ought to flip things around a little bit.
Do you want to do wage and personnel first?
What, uh, whoa, that, okay, that refers to further monkey wrenching of work. We can't do wage and personnel first because we're posted for a specific time. We'll just forward, we'll just do, stick with the agenda. All right, so we're going to go into executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 30, A, Section 2183, to conduct strategic sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective fire review sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fireworks litigation discussion, treasurer, collector, and to executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 30, A, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes May 16, 2023. So we're going to go into executive session, we will be coming out, and we will go into open session.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. George?
Here.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we're moving to executive session.
Good evening. Well, welcome to the May 30th, 2023, open session of the Wage and Personnel. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the meeting tonight is to reorganize our board. At this point, I'm going to ask for nominations for Chair.
You may want to clarify that we're in Wage and Personnel right now.
Yes, this is the Wage and Personnel meeting. We're going to reorganize Wage and Personnel, and I entertain a motion or nomination for Chair.
I nominate Joe.
Second.
Does anybody, I've been doing it for two years. Does anybody want to do it before?
Don't know what I'm doing.
Oh, you're a good liar. You've got great teachers around you.
I have no idea what I'm doing. Let's make the new guy do it.
No, I don't mind doing it, it's just if you guys, if you want to do it, it's by all means.
I want to learn to maybe do it another time.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have a, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor of having Joe Weeks as your Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
And we're going to gavel over to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it, everybody. So moving on, we'll approve the meeting minutes for April 25th, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we need to nominate a, a vice chair.
Oh, you're right, oh, whoa, I moved on too fast. Got the, I got the other one in my, in my, on my mind. All right, so I'll accept nomination for Vice Chair.
I nominate him.
There you go. Do you have a motion?
I second that.
All right, you get a second. Any other discussion or nominations? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you for reminding me of this. And lastly, clerk? I think this is going to be great. Accept nominations for clerk.
Want to be a clerk again?
I nominate, um, it's, it's.
We can nominate David George.
I was going to nominate David George.
Yeah, I second that.
I don't want to, I don't know what it entails.
Whatever you're doing right now. It's really just, yeah, historically, it's someone that takes the minutes, but we've never had to actually do that. So really, what it comes down to is if I have to be absent and Ed is absent, it would fall to you, the Chair of meetings. And you'll learn, like, whether it happens is slim, but you'll be able to, that's really the biggest fault.
And the clerk of the select board meeting reads the.
I read the announcements.
Announcements, but there are no announcements for this meeting.
Yeah, typically. No, not for the wage and personnel.
Well, not for wage and personnel.
Yeah, typically, it's not a large, no. If you're interested.
You don't want to do it anymore?
That's all right, I have a little.
We're just trying to share the wealth.
We're just trying to, yeah, spread it all around a bit.
I do the minutes, so you're not going to worry about that.
Yeah, she's, you don't have to do that.
That, that's always the crux, isn't it? So, and thank you for doing this. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Well, our second, all right. Any other discussion or nominations? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, yes. All right, congratulations, that's fantastic, thank you. Now we can move on to the group of the minutes, and thank you for reminding me. April 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Steamed, all right, very good. Let's set the motion to adjourn.
Moved, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Now we're returning to yet another open session of our regular select board meeting. And Mrs. Green, public announcements in upcoming meetings.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Cable and Engineering Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Committee for Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Memorial Day and Day Guard Observance Committee, Memorial Field, Memorial Field Trustees, the Fair and Thomas Mill Committee, and the zoning board appeals. Volunteer applications may be filed on our town website, www.hanson-n a dot com, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The town clerk's office will be closing at 12 noon on Wednesday, June 7th, and will be closed all day Thursday and Friday for a clerk's conference. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, June 6th, 2023, rescheduled from June 13th, 2023, and the Select Board, June 27th, 2023.
Awesome, thank you. And next up is appointments. We have a vote to appoint Charles Barron, so, oh.
I was going to say, Madam Chair, basically, we just need to recognize.
The appointments?
The appointments, right, or deciding to appoint.
All right, so we want to recognize the appointment of Charles Barron as Town of Hanson Deputy Fire Chief, Ty, Ty LeBryan as Town of Hanson Fire Lieutenant, and Thomas White as Town, AKA TJ, as Town of Hanson Fire Lieutenant. Okay, and then I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day local licenses as printed in the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then one quick little thing before we adjourn for the, well, not really adjourn, but going to the strategic planning update session, is I wanted to make sure that we are thinking about how we want to approach filling vacancies on boards and committees. Isn't the will of the board to entertain applications for people that we may have removed from those positions? Or do we want to not entertain those applications? If somebody has been removed from a, a position on a board or committee and re-appears to be appointed to that committee, if they were removed for reason, do, do, what is the reason?
They were removed for reason?
If they're removed for reason.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm positive.
Okay, all right, okay. Mr. Weeks?
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, well, they were, they were pretty, like, strongly against it.
Why would we remove people just looking back on it?
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure. So I, I think that we should set a policy and make it, you know, let it take.
I mean, I think it's a policy, I think we need to discuss more.
Is someone who was on a board and left because their kids had time constraints, they couldn't go out?
No, I'm talking about somebody who was a hearing or we made a.
Someone who we had hearings about and, you know.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. George, any thoughts on that?
Well, if it's been removed for a reason, I don't think you should let them back on.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Any further discussion on that then? Okay. And anything else that we want to talk about? As we go into strategic planning update session, one of the things that I had talked to Ms. McDowell about and Ms. Green is, in looking at our last strategic planning session notes, I noticed we did make some progress in some things. Mostly those were things that Lisa had to do or having to do with the update of the website. So they weren't really things like necessarily that we were doing or other committees were doing. And I want to make sure that where these strategic planning sessions are useful to people and that we continue to have decent attendance at them. And if we don't start achieving things, we're not going to have good attendance at them. So rather than having all five subjects discussed tonight, the two subjects we're going to really structure, we're going to focus on tonight are the facilities update. Nate, we're going to have Tony do the presentation to everybody that he's done to us about his thoughts on McQuan and Highway and what we might be able to do with that. Get that bubbling and percolating with everybody, get some thoughts there. I think Karen Stolfer is going to be here from library, so she might be able to give us an update of what they're thinking about. And again, nothing has to be decided tonight, but I just want people to kind of, like, get that foundational information so we can start thinking about it. And then the other thing, I asked Ms. Green if she could give an update on the citizen engagement, you know, with, with the website, what we're doing with the website. And then although this isn't under either one of those categories, one of the things that came up in the, I want to say, town administration arm was the professionalism of Town Hall, doing the policies, doing the sick leave, all of that stuff. So she's going to provide an update on that. So we have moved forward in some areas, but I think we've got to think about how we start moving more. And if that means we have to, I really hate to say this word out loud, but if it means we need to form a committee, you know, for something, then we might have to form a committee to do that. For instance, like, if we look through that strategic planning update, it's clear, I know you tried to get a TIF meeting going and nobody responded to. So we need to try that one more time, because that was one of the things to do. We know that the recreation group had all kinds of stuff. We need to form a recreation committee, and then we need to talk about it at one of our meetings. What's the composition look like? What's their charge going to be? We need to talk about that.
And I don't want to, we maybe could discuss that at a meeting, but basically, the reason that hasn't moved forward is because we haven't done that, and I think we need to.
Exactly.
It needs to be on the agenda.
Yes, yes.
If, if we are the next step, we need to be the next step. If it's just adding, say, we need, we want members, we need to add it to the, you know, what, what is the next step? Or we just need to?
I think the next step is we have to form the committee, talk about what it is, what we think the ideal composition should be of the committee, whether it's just at large or if we need people. So can we add that to our next agenda? All right, that would be great. Yeah, and then that will at least, then, then we can recruit and start to work. But we should have some vision of what we want them to execute. I know the group had a great list of, like, potential programs and all that stuff, but I think one of the things was to name a recreational director and then have a committee, because, right, if you have a committee and we don't have anybody executing on all the great ideas that they come up with, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, but, yeah, we need, it's the.
So we need to talk about all of that stuff. So if we can put that on the next agenda, Lynn. And then, were there other, any other, and then obviously, I don't know where you landed on the High Street thing. Is that objective tweak being tweaked? Or, I know you said we're meeting.
Yeah, we, we've had two meetings in a row that didn't even have a forum.
Okay, so you haven't had a chance to?
No.
Okay. And then I don't know what to call the McQuan reuse, because McQuan isn't going to be reused, but like, the McQuan Possibilities Committee or something, but like, what other possibilities there, which, again, Mr. DeFries is going to kind of talk about his vision, which is very, there's a lot of moving parts, and we all get to decide how it ends up. It's not cast in stone. And, but we need to form a committee, probably with people from each of the, like, sports, library, you know, each of those constituents, probably the Highway Committee. And then we, one of the things that we also have to talk about when we talk about facilities is the Highway Building, the old, the new one, you know, the potential new one, the Hox Ave, the existing one, where we're at with all of that. And I know decisions haven't totally been made, but like, you know.
Regarding the Hox Ave, could the possible things that have been discussed about it be discussed?
Yes.
So people know if there's other uses being considered?
Yes, and I think, I think one of the things I'm hoping Mr. DeFries tonight can talk to us about is the grants that he's applied for, one of which is the Brownfields grant, which completely takes off the table municipal use. So he can hopefully get into that, into that. Is there anything else people are looking to get out of tonight? I just want to make sure that, you know, we're achieving something and.
Well, I think a good update of what is, you know, especially, I'm happy with what's been going on with social media lives. I've been paying attention to that. They're doing a great job on that stuff. I'd love to see the website forums happening, but.
I think you're going to talk about timeline on that, right? Yeah. And, and I, and I think, you know, and I think we've made progress, but it doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of things that, that we could or should be doing. You know, the Memorial Day attendance was a little lackluster, and I don't quite know why that it is. I don't know if it's that we didn't engage people or that it was just an absolutely gorgeous day and there were a million other things people could do post-COVID that they couldn't do before. I really don't know. So, but certainly, we can always do a better job of reaching out, always. I mean, it's never going to be, you know. So, does anybody else have anything?
One thing that I think is related to both the website and Memorial Day is scheduling, is that there's so much going on in town. Even Joe and I didn't know what time to walk for at the parade, to be perfectly honest. I thought it was, I saw it was 10 in one place and 9 in another.
There's still some kind of mix up there.
Yeah, some things were saying 9, the website was saying 9, but the sign in front of Town Hall was saying 10, and, you know, so.
Yeah, how did that happen? The website said 9. Updated that.
Yeah.
I, I didn't actually look around. I don't know where they're charging, because that was, that was kind of major. Those four, those four windows. I don't know how it got, where they got the sign on.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I had mentioned to Lisa was, I thought Joe did an awesome job first.
Yeah, he did.
I mean, it was, you know.
Oh, definitely.
He really did a great job, but maybe working on the, the messaging there, and maybe a little dry war, particularly with the music, maybe up in front of hell there. And so, so I know you're going to give feedback to them, and if you guys have any other feedback you want Ms. Green to give to them, then just let her know, and, you know, we'll take it from there. But a good inaugural event for him, I thought.
Yep.
Pretty good, there were a lot of moving parts, some of which were out of his control, so, a lot of which were out of his control.
And then they did the afterwards at the American Legion, and basically, it was, it was the five of us, there was really nobody else.
Yeah, and I've always wondered, David, do you know if historically a lot of people have come back or not?
I think the problem is, I mean, they don't have, that place, I don't think, has a good reputation being a great place to go, you know? There's other places in town that people can go to and enjoy themselves, you know? I mean, it's great, I mean, it's a nice, it's a hidden little gym in town that.
But I mean, historically, on Memorial Day, have people gone back or no?
I don't know.
Because I mean, there really is no more appropriate place to go, Memorial Day than there, right? I mean.
I think, it took me 12, 12 years to find that place. I didn't even know that there was a Hanson American Legion. Even Tom Chambers, he says, I've lived here 20 years. I didn't know that there was an American Legion in the town of Hanson. So I don't think, I don't think they get the word out there that it even exists. I mean, we have a, we have a Facebook page now, and Nicole runs, myself and Nicole run the Facebook page. She's posting, she posts all the pictures, she's posting events or anything going on there. She's posting it, and there's rental halls and a rental hall for that, to rent that pavilion. It's short money, I think it's like $75 to rent that. And I think you can actually get it with a lot tender, too.
Well, I think we need to find a way to, maybe next year, try, you know, I mean, that's a great invitation that's open to the public. You know, from the Legion, it's, it's, you know, I think it would make the guys feel good and gals, you know, that are in the Legion, that people care and that they're going back and showing respect.
And how many people they had marching in the parade.
Yeah.
That shows you that there's not, there's not, it's not a big membership, yeah. They need, they need more members, they need more E-Board members, they need, they need younger guys.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, not that I'm young, but, I mean, compared to an 87-year-old man, yeah, I'm young.
Yeah.
You know?
No, I, I get it. I think that's, you know, organizationally, every organization goes through that kind of, that cycle. So I think we've all been part of groups that have done that. So hopefully, you guys are on the upswing. All right, any, anything, any other thoughts before we adjourn?
Are we doing this? Discussion regarding filling vacancies in board committees? Is that what we just talked about?
That was what we just discussed.
So now doing this tonight?
Yeah.
What is that?
A lady's name on the list.
No, no, that's on our next agenda. Yeah, I think she just did a list so that we knew. We weren't planning on talking about liaisons and stuff tonight, right? That's on our next agenda.
No, I just wanted you to have that.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
I wasn't sure if I had all the information in here, if I had.
Yeah, she wants people to validate that so that when we do discuss it, we've got, got our act together, because she's in the process of validating all the liaisons and all that stuff, and it's a long movie artist.
That was easy.
Okay, so I will entertain a mo, oh.
Did you want town administration board to come, Jeff?
How much time do we have?
Do you mean, I have one.
That would be great.
One, well, a couple of things. So I wanted to piggyback on Madam Chair's comments on the Veterans Agent. Joe joined us basically just a little over a month ago, and this was his first go-around with the parade, so I thought he'd do a great job. And obviously, we can support him and help him in a way going forward with that. Luckily, the weather cooperated as well.
Just perfect.
So we're tempted to have him, he's very dedicated. I'm sure he'll work with, with veterans on the American Legion, get the board updated and stay up for them. Second, too, just updating several background on our master plan, which the town had done back in 2008. The, our town planner, Tony DeFries, had applied for a grant through the Massachusetts Growth Program and was awarded $60,000 towards updating the master plan. We got an additional technical grant from Old Colony Planning Council, and we, $10,000 was approved at the special, the town meeting to use our funds for that. So we have entered into a contract with Old Colony Planning Council and are going to begin updating the master plan. And then I have some very big news. So back in January, we had a discussion with the board regarding the McQuan TIP program, the Transportation Improvement Program, which is a Department of Transportation-run program, and it's approximately $11.5 million to redesign and reconstruct McQuan Street on a lot of areas where there's dangerous curves and hills and things like that. So back in January, I had come before the board and we had let you know, myself and Tony DeFries, that there's an issue with the water pipe that provides the towns of Abington and Rockland with water. And basically, the need for a subsurface utility exploration was needed to determine how far below the surface that pipe is and then where it is exactly and what the conditions of that pipe. One of the main issues and concerns was people didn't know what condition that pipe was in since it was put back in, it put in in the 1820s. So it was concerned that the pipe would break or be damaged during construction. The cost of having an SUE, they call it, is about $100,000. The town can have the funding for it. Abington Rockland Water Department had no interest in paying it, and we've kind of stuck. The Department of Transportation basically gave us six months to figure out how we'll reuse, reuse the project. So I am so happy to report, just after that, literally the next day, I had reached out to all the legislative partners and officials, Senator Brady's office, State Representative, Senator Josh Cutler, David DePost, and Congressman Bill Keating's office. And we arranged a large meeting between all of us, our, our planning partners, and the DOT team, that is, Slaughter Co., and environmental partners. So we all talked about the need to find funding for these positions so we don't lose this project. Friday, I got an email from Senator Brady's office that he has secured funding for this, $100,000, to house this SUE, subsurface utility, as we're reaching some time. They're waiting for one more formality to go through, but there's no doubt that this one will not be approved by the town, by the legislature. So that is wonderful news. Thank you from the heart of our hearts to Senator Brady's office, to Representative Josh Cutler's office, and all their hard work to get us the funding for this. Because for the town to have in jeopardy $11.5 million roadway construction project because of $100,000 would just heartbreaking. So I'm really happy to report that.
The more of these grants.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
And then, Tina, that completes my town history.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a very up note to end anyone. I will entertain the.
We're not, we're not meeting, we're just pausing, but I would.
Right, I will entertain a motion to move to strategic planning.
To walk over there.
Yes. And continue our meeting. Thanks for making the time to be here tonight. It's great to look out and see you all. We want to fully engage people, we do so many amazing things in town that I can't thank you enough. And if I start naming people that have probably, that, leaving some things out. We're going to do things differently tonight than we've done in the past couple of weeks. What I want to make sure is that this time is productive so that you want to come to the next meeting, you don't feel like we're circling the drain, you're not getting anything done. And I think that we've had sufficient amount of time breaking up into the subgroups to get an idea of the meat of each one of those initiatives. And so I thought tonight, in the interest of getting to know one another a little bit better and actually moving the needle, we're going to focus on two key areas, and those are the citizen engagement and then the public facilities. And we will have the next meeting, which will be four months, and we're also going to change the cadence of these to be four months. And the reasoning here is, first of all, we know nothing will get done over the summer. And second of all, we'll be planning for town meeting, and we want to make sure we get through October town meeting successfully. So probably looking the week after town meeting or two weeks after town meeting for the next, for the next session. In the interim, that isn't to say that we're not continuing to make progress on all the other areas, in particular, I have to say, the economic development, because there's a specific committee assigned to that is making progress, and also because we have the wonderful and talented Mr. DeFries helping us. So similarly, we're going to talk at the board selection, our next board selection meeting of creating a recreation department slash committee so that all those wonderful ideas that came up at the last brainstorming session under that umbrella can get executed. That's going to take some steps. And then, what's the other one that I was forgetting? And then the town administration, which is just, that's going to be an ongoing piece. So the first piece tonight for Mr. DeFries. Will be, Mr. DeFries is going to give us an update. Now, some of you may have already had an opportunity to see this, and some you may not. I want to set the foundation for what Mr. DeFries is going to present by saying that this is very, very maneuveratory. A lot of moving parts, we need all kinds of engagement, we need all kinds of ideas. And it is the riddle of the century, what will we do with the McQuan property? We know that we're going to tear it down, and then that's going to give us a footprint. And what do we do with that blank footprint? And it's wonderful to be in a, a position where we can even imagine what we could do with that footprint. And of course, a lot of the things that have been discussed, ball fields, of course, we never have enough of those, expansion of the library slash new library, one or the other, expansion of senior center, and those are sort of the top, you know, kind of contenders. That isn't to say that's the only thing on the list. We know that there's a lot of the property behind where McQuan was, that's conservation, that we really haven't, it really hasn't been fully accessible, partly because it's weapons, but also just because we haven't really, you know, got any way to get in there, so is that an opportunity? Is there an opportunity to keep a playground there? These are all many, many different facets, and we're probably not going to decide all of these things tonight, but I definitely would welcome feedback, ideas. And at our next selection meeting, we will be discussing whatever we're going to rename this committee, because we can't call it McQuan reuse, because we're not reusing McQuan. We tried, but we failed, if anyone's interested. And now that we're going to tear it down, we'll call it, I don't know, the reimagining of that footprint, whatever that committee will be. If you're interested in participating in that, I think we definitely, there's certain stakeholders that we really would like to have be. there's certain stakeholders that we really would like to have be part of that. Clearly, a library, clearly somebody from Parks and Recreation, clearly highway, and, you know, obviously, we are, you know, somebody from senior center. So, but if that's something that really speaks to you, we'd love to have you join us. So with that, Mr. DeFreyes, I will turn it over to you. Oh, I'm sorry, I lied. Also, I want to welcome back Ms. Donner, who had helped us facilitate the task. Once we get through Mr. DeFreyes's piece and have a little bit of a conversation there, Ms. Green's gonna give us an update on our citizen engagement. We've made a lot of headway there. We want to update everybody on where we're at. We're never gonna make enough headway there because we need to engage people where they are, and that's a huge task. And we've got a lot more to do there, and we know that. But we're making progress, so that's positive. And so probably what we'll do after those updates are provided is break into two groups. And this is a chance, we're not assigning groups. So if there's something that speaks to you and you feel passionate about it, then go with that group. And if you don't feel passionate, then, you know, go with whatever group you feel at least, you know, I don't know, whatever, which one is at least compelling to you, I guess. If you don't feel passionate about them. All right, so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. DeFreyes. Start with that, Tony.
So when I came to the answer, some of the issues that were being discussed was the need for the expanding for a new library, expanding senior center, what to do with the Maquon School that had been closed since, I believe, 2018. And also, the what to do with the Highway Department, which is currently on a site that has limited expansion and buildings that are in dire need of renovation. So after looking basically at the GIS and where all these properties sort of fall together, using my experience from like the private sector, I looked at what was available and felt that the Highway Department being current location is central to the town. In essence, they're right in the center of town. They're about two miles from every corner of town. And there had been discussion about Hawks Ave, which falls more in the southeast corner of town. If we, considering the Maquon School has outlived its usefulness and housing was looked at and many other options, I took a look at it and said, well, if we take the ball fields and all the athletic components that are across the street at the highway site, and we were to move them over to the Maquon School, so there'd be brand-new fields, brand-new basketball court, skate park, so playground, baseball fields, potentially a practice field for football or soccer. This site is 17 acres, and based on the GIS, it appears that it's 17 acres of mainly dry land. So moving all that to that site would now free up the Highway Department site to allow us to put up a new build, highway building on that same site closer to the road. And while that construction was taking place, Highway could stay right where they are, right in the building. And then once the new building would be completed, they could just move into the new building and either renovate the existing buildings they have or knock them down. So this plan that you see before you is like I, I like to state, it's just to discuss, it's step one of 100. It's just, here's what you can fit on this site, and here's what you can do. What it will also allow us to do is to give some land to the library to allow them to either expand and double their existing footprint to 16,000 square feet and also double the size of the senior center. And allow them to, in essence, stay in their building while the addition would be completed. So it allows people to, it allows us to leave some things in place while new things are being constructed. It gives a new life to the Maquon site. It creates new ball fields. And I know when I was a kid, new ball fields are always a great thing. And it allows for a larger footprint on 17 acres so we can expand even further. And it gives the ball fields and parks and recreation the ability to put up a, a building for concession stands to sort of allow them, us to also take over the old police station and use that space, renovate that space into something else, office space or whatever we deemed, or as part of highway, whatever. So that's what you see in front of you is my thought process. And these are to scale based on the information available. But again, it's to open discussions and to what I could see, what you can do with what you have. And it's all town-owned property. So you don't have to go out and find additional land or funding to purchase land. And everyone can sort of stay put. But yet get new, new buildings and continue to go on. So that was my thought process. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay, that's awesome. And then, Mr. DeFreyes, if you could give a, or I'm not sure, to whom am I concerned, Mrs. Green or, or Mr. DeFreyes, a brief update on the use of the Hawks Avenue building as a highway building? I know, Ian, you're heading up that department, but we've got a grant that would apply for, which we don't know if we're gonna get, but if we do, to clean up brownfields. So I don't know who wants to give that update because I think it is important to have that update to understand why we've been talking about this.
I really don't, only you told me, but I've heard, the grant thing intrigues me. And I'd also like to know, I've heard that there was, there's been some mention of other uses of the building. And I think it would be good for people to hear what those other uses might be.
So the donation grant, sorry, the donation deed really limits what you can do with Hawks Ave. You're literally, with the donation deed, the way it's written, it's, you can't go below ground. And so if you do anything with, if you put a parking lot there and you need drainage and it has to go in the ground, you might run into a problem. Septic, you might run into a problem. So there's always, the donation deed is pretty much pigeonhole the town into what they can do there. Because I think that the previous owners, even though they may have done some work to clean up the site, the way the donation deed is written and the fact that they donated to the town, I think they still had concerns that they may not have cleaned it all up. So they handed it off to the town. I think it's, if I had been, if I had been here in those days, I would have said, it's a wolf in sheep's clothing. I think you've been handed a golden hand grenade, they pulled the pin and ran. And even though they may have told the town, look, in perpetuity, we'll come in and we'll, you know, we'll be responsible if you find anything that's contaminated. I think they're long gone. Good luck finding anyone that's associated with that project. And if they were gonna do that, they should have left money in escrow to address that, and I don't think they did. The grant that I'm chasing for the brownfields, if the grant, if Hanson receives the grant, this, one of the stipulations in the grant, or there's two stipulations in the grant, is that at the end of it, that the site not be used for municipal use and that the site not be used for cannabis use, though they would prefer that the site be used for either housing or creation of jobs. And you would think that, you know, if it's a cannabis use, it's creating jobs. But that's when, that's for some reason, one business they don't want going there. So those two stipulations only come into play if Hanson gets the grant. So it's, it's a, that's the bottom line. If we get the grant, those are the two stipulations that we have to follow. If we don't get the grant, then it's, all other options are on the table.
Okay, does that help, Mrs. Green?
Well, that interests me, yeah.
And then, okay, and then Jane, Mr. Shav, was there anything you wanted to add from your perspective about highway?
Kind of just waiting on the survey. Mr. DeFreyes has arranged with the engineering of the site, the layout, the plot plan, and then testing of the, the whole facility, the old police, the highway, the ball fields, and the skate park and the other ball field have to be all combined into one lot and recorded. So he's working on that. And then, once we know it's a suitable site, then we can move forward with the construction and estimating process.
So where are we at with that, Mr. DeFreyes?
Well, we, the proposal was just executed last week with, so Weston and Sampson, I believe. So as part of what they're going to do is, as Mr. Shaves was saying, is they're going to do, in essence, a site evaluation and make sure that there isn't a, let's say, contamination on that site. They're also gonna do a property line survey. Now, we do have, in the planning board files, a Form A plan that made, that created two lots there. One being, the one being where the Highway Department would sit with all the ball fields. And it was, the property, the lot lines were shaped to encompass all the ball fields. So you're looking at just over nine acres. Unfortunately, that Form A was not approved at the time. When it was brought before the planning board, based on the information in the file, there was only three members that night and two, one voted against it. So it, it sort of just fell by the wayside. But my understanding is that the property line demarcating, we'll call this nine acres, has actually been bounded. So in other words, there's physical concrete bounds at every, every angle change. So I think we need to bring back that Form A. It was prepared by a local company. We could probably contact them to get a new Mylar and then bring it back before the planning board and see if they'll endorse the plan. And then you would create a new deed and so forth. So the Highway Department would sit on, right now, they're sitting on, I believe it's about six acres. With the new, new plan, it would be nine and a half acres, which is about the same size as what Hawks Ave was, same size as Hawks Ave.
Madam Chair, I'm the one that presented that plan to the planning board that I remember vividly, creating that plan. It was funded by Community Preservation Funds. It was a joint project between the Procyche Education and the Town Parks Committee, which used to exist at that point in time. And there had been, shall we say, a lack of certainty about what the dynamics were between the different types of uses. And so Land Planning was hired with open process to lay out the line. I personally walked the line with the Highway, sort of at that time, to ground and made sure it accommodated its present lands as their future needs, as well as what the recreational needs were. And there's probably 17 concrete bounds in the ground now. It was a tad disappointing that a majority of the planning board, the meeting, voted in favor of it. But if we needed three signatures, only two were available. And as you say, it stopped right there. But I'd be more than happy to contribute to any reexamination of that because it was a good project of that project, so to speak. At point, and if I may say one other thing. On the Hawks Ave property, there are extensive records created by and created for DDP by the previous owner of the property. Those are public records, they'd be available. I believe that before we go too much further down the road of planning anything, we should mine that, nice to us, of public records.
Mr. DeFreyes, you have looked at those records, right?
Yeah. DDP for Hawks Ave?
Yeah.
The public company hired contractors to do a significant amount of cleanup where both seem to be done in doing it. And the public organization retained a bunch of, several papers that are still being cleaned up under the terms of the DDP requirements. The property is no longer being acted on with it. I think the records, as we're speaking of, should be very, very informative what we think of brownfield or something else and should be examined, see if all the value are available.
Right, I believe you have looked at those records, right?
I, I've looked at, yeah, and if it does.
I think we should look at all of them very carefully. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Baker, did you want to chime in? I know you had some thoughts of things that might be able to be done with the Hawks Ave if it does not become a highway building? Did you want to chime in a bit on that, or?
No, we have no place to store anything, equipment for fire, equipment for police, highway. It'd be great for dry storage if we could get some stuff in there and monitor with cameras and surveillance and everything else. But we have nothing in town.
So Chief O'Brien, and I might add, our new chief, especially, we're not being pedantic or learning, but we are still our own chief. Is that something that you think the fire, you know, department would feel comfortable if it were, you know, as Mr. Baker indicated, you know, secured and all that, storing some equipment there? And similarly, Mr. Shav, would you feel comfortable, you know, putting some things there if need be temporarily?
We could still assess a little later.
Yep, okay, all right. And then, I know one, one thing that had come up, which kind of excited me a little bit, was the thought of perhaps Mass Wildlife Fisheries had had a conversation with, with Ms. Green about potentially leasing the back building, the small building, for the purposes of education, maybe having like educational workshops or something. Of course, that has its own set of concerns because they have to do septic and all kinds of other stuff that isn't in place right now. But, but at least there are people that are thinking that it's, there's some useful reuse if it doesn't end up becoming a highway building. Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to talk about? Mr. Baker, well, just one moment, Mrs. DeFreyes. Did, is there anything else, since we're talking about public facilities, all of our buildings? I might do a shout out to South Shore Regional School on the nice cleanup that they did at the town hall. It'd be greatly appreciated. Is there anything you wanted to chime in with in terms of, you know, your thoughts on some of our buildings and things that need to be addressed?
Town hall definitely needs to be gone through. The building is getting older in age. The roof is thirty, about 30 years old now. Siding, as we already went through with that problem last year with the water damage, that went up huge. We have to start thinking about maybe doing the whole thing over because it's just gonna start rotting away on us. So we have, everything's historical and it's just falling apart. I mean, we're doing as much as we can with our limits.
And then, Mrs. DeFreyes, I will go to Mr. DeFreyes. I was wondering if we might also be able to give us a name on the grant that you had applied for, for the front part of, for the front part of the food pantry in Bonny House?
Yeah, so under the one-stop grant applications, so FY '24, I've applied for five grants, four are completed. And the one that I'm waiting for some budget numbers on actually happens to be the High Street in what would be the Food Pantry Building Complex. And so there's a $1 million grant available, which is what I'm hoping to, the budget numbers will sort of work out because I think those buildings would probably pretty be, be close to that, if not older. So it's under, it falls under the underutilized properties program. So this would be used to renovate those two buildings, bring them up to current building code, ADA standards, and allow us to repurpose those buildings for, whether to lease office space, meeting space, whatever. But it would, it would be for that, it'd be for that specific building, not the Bonny House. I figured that maybe FY '25, depending on what the result is of this, this grant round, applying for Bonny House, maybe then speaking with Mr. Tarvis about that and maybe doing that as an underutilized property for next year.
Okay, that's awesome. Mrs. DeFreyes, and then, Mr. Mansfield, I don't know if you have a, you might be able to tell us what the thoughts are on Bonny House, I don't know yet, Mrs. DeFreyes.
I had an update on the live bird. Five years ago, we hired Ruth Cowan to do our strategic planning. We rehired her because it's, you know, it's too old to use for libraries. So too much time has gone by. We've been working with the MBLC almost daily. So Ruth is, we've met with her a couple of times. And the trustees have met, then I'm on the planning committee. And what we're doing right now is focusing on, we're doing focus groups, we're doing surveys to find. surveys to find out what people, you know, how they perceive the library, what they want from the library, and so forth. And the big thing we're focusing on is to get more involved with the community, to have the community more involved with us, how they, you know, view the library, their thoughts. I mean, a lot of people never come to the library, but they use the library daily online, because you can download so much. And also, there's a lot of different ethnic groups in the town, and we don't see a lot of people in the library. So I'm trying to reach out to different groups to see how we can better help them. So, and also, MBLC prior, your plan had to be for twenty years out to get the fifty percent funds from state. Now it has to be thirty years out.
Mrs. Caparo, just for those who aren't given happening, what does MBLC?
Oh, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, and I'm the chair trustee for the library.
Okay, awesome.
So, you know, they're looking thirty years out. What's the town going to look like? The population and so forth. So, I mean, we're working on this, you know, Karen and I, mostly Karen and a few others, almost daily now. So that's our latest update.
And I think she's got some citizen, like brainstorm sessions, maybe next week or something?
Yes, the focus groups. There's one on Monday evening, there's one Wednesday morning, there's one Tuesday evening. I think that's filled up. We invited a lot of people who hold offices in the town, people from town hall, people who, like, say, maybe Kiwanis, Rotary, I'm trying to think of all the different groups that, you know, know a lot of people and can probably give us some good guidance or what they feel. You know, we did this before. It's kind of a repeat, and a lot of things, the same things we still want. It's just, we have to work it thirty years out. And, you know, COVID changed a lot of things, too. And the library has never been used so much more since COVID. You know, like the take and make crafts, they're so popular, we can't keep up with them. There's a lot of different things. And now, like, the senior center in the library have a once-a-month movie, you know, a movie that's shown currently at the movies. We have it at the library, things like that. So we're trying to offer even more. And of course, everything is at no charge. Like yoga, you have to pay for, but most part, everything is free. So, and, you know, Karen has good relationship with Mary, so they're always working together. And, you know, we want to keep it that way. And if we have a shared building, we have a shared building. It's just, again, we need our own septic system and our own bathrooms. So that's about it. Thank you.
We have folks to replace the broken windows in Bonny House, tear off the ceilings, and the contractor willing to give us numbers on installing this existing stash that Alan Clements built for the, for the addition in the back. So that's where we stand right now. And I'm talking to Kurt, I believe we have enough money to do those things. And the plan is to try to get the exterior of that building secured and, and paint the trim and to get it to look presentable, in the hopes that it'll kind of defer some of the damage and disreputable look to it.
Yeah, that would be amazing.
So we're hoping to get that done soon.
Okay. And is there a thought that you might need money from the town or CPC or anything to finish up some of that, or?
Well, I don't know. Kurt's supposed to look into how much exact money we have. It appears we have enough for what I've just described. Beyond that, I'm not sure. He's looking into that.
Okay, awesome. Is there anybody else who wants to give a facilities update of any sort?
I have two quick things. For the record, the Hanson Historical Society is a 501(c)(3), so they perhaps could launch a campaign to seek donations, supplement all the things that they could run. The other thing is, to your gathering, the McClan School site, has the school committee or anyone from, they would have been involved in any of the discussions of looking for fire, not just get the building down, but I'm of a stronger opinion that when that land was blocked for school back in the late sixties, early seventies, Hanson was growing a lot. And while that's taken off, I don't know what we shouldn't be thinking, what's going to happen in the next fifty, seventy-five to hundred years and Hanson starts growing again with all the housing, to transportation requirements, things like that. If we were to need to buy land for a new school, I don't know where we would buy that land. And I know we have the middle school property, we have the middle school property, and whether there's sufficient space or not to build out for future schools, one thing on spec, you know, some things have been looked at. But I would hope that we wouldn't, let's say, do something with the McClan School property that would cause us to regret in fifty, seventy-five years not having it available for a school. So there's a lot of things to think about. We've already talked about things that are already there. But I didn't know if anyone representing the school and schools of the next generation or two or three is in consultation with us on that property.
No, and if they have indicated they do not need that school, that they are not, I, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but.
Not the school itself, but the property.
Yes. I guess, Mr. DeFries, we can certainly reach out to them to see what, you know, they're projecting for growth, although I think early returns are that they're not projecting growth for quite a few years. So here, what you're saying, Mr. Cummins, and we'll take that into consideration. Okay, Mr.?
Yeah, I think this is a great, a great plan and a great first step or whatever, as you said, it's a one step from a hundred or whatever. Personally, I'd like to see a few other options. What I don't want to see is us to go in one direction and then say, give the town one option, and that's either do it or not.
No, this is just a starting point.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
So, well, so what this document is, is to discuss, and then the group that gets together and talk about this property will say, we think as a group that this is what we want, we don't want that, we want this to be bigger, whatever. And then ultimately, that gets presented to the select board, who then is going to present it to the town. So there's plenty of vetting, but I don't think, it's not really just to DeFries's job necessarily to come up with multiple options. At this point, the, the basic footprint is going to be presented to the committee, and then they'll kind of work with Mr. DeFries and getting feedback from all the different disciplines, and then have, hopefully come back to the select board, something that the majority of people would be happy with.
I just, I just like having multiple. I mean, I've heard people just say, pick up the highway and move it to where McClan is now and, and leave everything else. And it's just, you know, like, what, how much would that cost compared to how much would this cost? And then give the town something to, to weigh. You know, this is a beautiful plan, but it might not be the least expensive.
What highway would McClan was?
Yeah. I mean, that's, is that an option?
Right next to the library and the senior center?
No, I'm saying, I'm not saying, I'm just saying other options. I'm not saying I'm the one that knows all the options.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, are there other options? It doesn't seem like there's only one option that we should be going for. But if, if everybody thinks that's what we should do, that's what we'll do.
No, this, that's why we started off that conversation, saying, this is just for discussion purposes. This is one imagining that Mr. DeFries had. Who even really knows where it's going to end up? It could end up with some of these elements, none of these elements. Right. You know, I guess we'll see. Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry.
I hate to, I hate to sit and talk like a Tony Downer, but one of the things that was pointed out right at the beginning of the meeting is moving the needle. And I have to tell you, from my own experience in talking with constituents in the town of Hanson, one of the things that they are absolutely disenfranchised is all of the kicking of the can down the door. Great point that you make in regards to, is this the wrong option? But we do have to look back at all of the work that has been done already to vet a lot of these things that we're even talking about today. Talking about whether or not a school's going to be needed in fifty years doesn't move the needle today. We have day one problems that we need to deal with now, that the citizens of this town are sick and tired of that city hall or town hall not moving the needle. We have an opportunity now to really execute some stuff. I'm not trying to point any fingers, but a lot of this stuff has already been going through for many, many years. As far as the school departments, I work in the largest school department east of the Mississippi. When they're losing thousands of students, I don't see Hanson gaining much more. So we don't have a lot of day one stuff to, to kind of go over again and look at those options. These are all things that we've all been in rooms talking about behind closed doors, and now those silos are coming down. We really need to start doing some action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to touch on Joe's point, I was going to kind of say the same thing. You know, Tony, what is the next steps to starting to get this implement? Like, is there a checklist that we need as a, as a government going to say, okay, formal committee, have this? Like, what are the steps that can be done to stop implementing something like this?
Well, as far as McClan School, I mean, town administrators begun the steps already to get the building taken down. So that's going to happen in the near future, I think, in the fall. And working with the highway superintendent, we've, we're beginning the first steps of examining his, the existing site of the highway department and seeing what, what's going on there. So, like I've said many times, and I'll sound like a broken record, it's, this was for discussion purposes. This is to give the town an idea of what they can actually do with these sites. This is step one of a hundred. We know that municipalities, you know, in the private sector, we get it done, and the municipal sector, it's a little bit slower. But it's just, I say, we're probably at step one. And we do have a checklist, and obviously, it comes down to finances, you know, whether it's the grants, you know, grant monies, CTC money, or however we can figure out to obviously pay for this. Do we have any rough idea of how much something like this was just put in today to be able to prove us? No, we haven't done anything.
Just the fields?
Just the fields. So I'm just saying, if McClan was in the area of state, how much would just the field and the library expansion cost?
No, we haven't looked at that yet, because we haven't reached, I just feel.
That's step thirty.
Right. I didn't feel, I didn't feel that we had reached the point of, as Mr. Heel says, you know, is, is this what we're going to do? It's definitely what we're going to do. Until you definitely know what you're going to do, you know, that's kind of just, you're going to spend to maybe get that budget, maybe never use it, or if you spend it, maybe waste the money. So we sort of have to figure out what does the, what does Hanson want to do. Again, here's an option that I think, based on my experience, could solve three issues.
Mr. O'Brien?
I was just going to jump in, just a form parks and fields and parents for kids that have used the fields. The earlier, if you put parks and fields involved with us, especially with the work that we've done with CPC before, because we actually did the joint, one of our, was the chair of the committee at the time. For, but the good thing with the, with the members that are on CPC, especially now, a lot of them are baseball, football guys, soccer and things like that, they're going to call on the towns for you and get you all kinds of quotes and things like that rather quickly, which, which might help you out too, and take a little bit off of your plate for doing it. At least you can get some rough numbers and that kind of stuff, so.
I think that's why, what I've been committing to, so to answer your question in my mind, those things Mr. DeFries said, and then next step is to form the committee to look at this, which is going to be parks and fields, senior center, library, I don't, and then I don't know who else really wants to be part of it, maybe just a bunch of citizens at large in addition to that, so that we can get a good cross combination of ideas and that we can make sure that we're meeting as many competing needs as possible on that one property. I know that's a lot to go, but if you don't set a lot to go, then what do you set in a pivotal goal? So, so that's, that's where we're at.
But what, were you setting the amount of what would cost to demolish the building?
We already have that. With RFP, Ms. Green, did you want to speak to where we're at on that?
Sure. So we did have a bid, and it basically, it's amazingly enough, it costs us just under a million dollars to demolish the building and to basically flatten, flatten the property. We won't forget to pack in the fall. We are fashioning myself and the help Eric, we're going to be putting together a fashioning and argument for our funds for this. We're trying to look at some different options to put that together so that we get our funds to cover this, which is great, because that leaves money open for many of the other things. And if I may also speak on the baseball fields, people that have kids that are in baseball, youth football, youth soccer, I don't know, you know, what did I, who loved my son in the baseball since he was five, women used to hold tournaments in the summertime for the traveling teams. And I'll tell you, that brought a ton of business to the town. It brought teams, it brought business, it brought money. So looking at this as an economic development is, is definitely worth considering, because it will bring money to the town in, in many different ways. And you never know. I mean, you could bring people from Connecticut, New York. You never know what could grow out of a project like this. Where it's located, right across the street from the school, right now, where the fields are, people park it in, and they walk across fifty-eight. So not the best setup of that. This way here, they're not walking across busy streets. And then you have senior center and library right there. It's just such a combination of these, and you have our elders and our library. It's really a great collaboration to get the whole community together in that one spot. And again, I speak of it because I was involved in it. And if you go and pass any baseball fields on the weekend, you see all the cars, you see all the people there. It brings business to the town, it brings honor, it gets the kids involved in the activities. It really, it points them all in the right direction, keeps them out of trouble. So that's something definitely for us to look at, is what is this going to do for our kids moving forward?
Yes, Mr. Mansfield.
Yes. I'm, I'm in favor of this project in concept, you know, without knowing the costs. And I mean, I hope that committee would involve Hanson in baseball, as they put a lot of money into the existing site. I talked with the manual doctor, you know, he ran for speed app and nose handover. So I just, he just gave me a word of caution that they built that Forge Park complex, which is considerably bigger than just what we're talking about here. And they were promised lots of rental revenue, which he said hadn't materialized as of yet. So I think we just need to be careful about, you know, putting too mu, too much hope in that. We do get rental revenues from the Robinson Street baseball fields and the, and other fields. So we, it's not that there's not interest in using the fields, but I just think we need to be, we shouldn't expect that it'll pay for this.
No, oh, no, no, I don't think that's the case. And to the extent possible, we'll try to leverage as much grant money as we possibly can, to the extent that community preservation money is appropriate, and the community preservation committee agrees that it's a project that they'd like to support, we'll try and leverage that money. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to do things at little or no additional taxation, which is always an ideal scenario.
Commander Shannon, I'm here. Hanson has an open space and recreation plan. It's about the third version that we have. Those things have a, an approved life of seven years. Our plan, I believe, expires next year, it does. And we therefore are talking about things in that plan that cover a lot of what I'm talking about here, open space and recreation, including active recreation, and the need to create a plan for that. Having the current plan, which some of us had several iterations of experience with, it's not something to sit down very well over the weekend, but it's very worthwhile because it creates eligibility for the Department of Conservation Services, offers grants for developing parks, for purchasing open space, and I think something else, too. But you can't even apply for those grants until you have an approved open space and recreation plan. So that's an exercise we've done a few times, and I think we could do it more efficiently this time than the two and a half years it took last time. There's better morals and how to write it, I think. But that need is upon us. Now, we've had several successful, we've never failed in an application for grants from that, that department, but we need to keep ourselves eligible to apply. And that effort, which would involve probably the, the planning department of conservation and some others, open parks and fields, that will be a necessary worthwhile effort, supporter of any time.
And so who's going to initiate that, and what will be initiated?
Planning and conservation.
Planning and conservation were the two sort of co-sponsors of it before. It was, the plan we have now was largely written by a person who was simultaneously the town planner and the town conservation agent.
That person currently employed at OCPC?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
But conversations should start, pretty much like yesterday, on how to renew that plan and keep it current.
Okay, and I appreciate you saying that. Similarly, Mr. DeFrias is one of the few towns that's actually complied with the NTA communities deadlines, which allows us to apply for grants there as well. And there's a lot of controversy around that and lawsuits or whatever, but happy to say we will not be one of them, because Mr. DeFrias has complied with the deadlines. So, and to the extent that there's anything that would allow us to continue to apply for grants, whether it's green communities, or whatever it might be, energy committees, or whatever, you know, please work with Ms. Green, and we'll make sure that we get those done. Mr. Kement?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, like, in the planning, we have the master plan. And in open space, we have the open space plan. And I think it's important that we're gonna have committees considering adding recreation and so forth like that. I think all sides of the fence need to get together and discuss more closely how that little plan will evolve to the point where we're looking for grants that people will see that we're trying to afford.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Kement. And in my ideal dreamlike world, I would have somebody from planning, somebody from conservation, parks and fields, senior center, library, board of health, you know, all of the, basically every land use group that we have. Just so that, you know, we don't have this well-intentioned group of volunteers coming up with a plan and, whoops, we didn't know those were wetlands, whoops. And I know Mr. DeFrias will help us, you know, steer the ship, because he's, you know, very versatile and knowledgeable about land use. But it's always helpful to have, you know, people from the various disciplines too. I just think it makes it a stronger, you know, more bulletproof project, so. Mrs. Rain, yes?
I just wanted to speak about the fields, the handover fields versus the Hanson fields. I'll say one thing about the handover fields, nobody knows they're there. That is so far over the beaten path, ours are going to be front center in a fairly accessible spot. And I think that if people were to keep in mind the idea of pushing a business rent, you know, getting leads and everything else in there, I think that it would be a really good, it just is something that you can't just say it's available, and then not push the, push for it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
That is a beautiful complex, so.
It's gorgeous, but it's way in the woods, and nobody knows it's there.
Yeah, in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we will ultimately break out into the public facilities subject, but I just wanted, because you have that foundation launch. And now, if we can, Ms. Green, if I can prevail upon you, give us a little update on our citizen engagement, where we have a website, where we have a social media outreach, and what I have to raise in.
All right, so in the administration, we have, leaving, we have a letter engagement, and we've brought on a new consultant who's gonna be looking at, we're giving all of our policies, personnel policies, our personnel manual. And they're gonna be looking at those and making sure we're all up to date with all labor laws. And they'll have, they'll help us with putting together new policies that are updated. We're gonna have them help us with some job descriptions. It's human resources aid, so this is what they do for a living for municipalities. So they will help us be all up to date. All of personnel policies will all be put in a nice little manual that will be available to all employees that will know that. So there will really be a clean understanding of the expectation of a municipal employee. So we are moving forward in that direction. As far as our community civic engagement, we do have Capital Strategic Solutions doing a very good job with their Facebook media pages, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and there's one other one I think they're working on as well. But from the data that they're collecting, we are increasing the followers quite a bit from prior to them coming on board. They have a really unique clever way, and really very nice way of putting information out there. It's animated, it's really eye-catching. So they're doing a very good job with getting the information out there. And of course, we keep moving forward every day with more and more outreach. We've released our first town hall newsletter to all employees within, just to kind of give them a little heads up on what's going on in these apartments. So the, it took a little while to get the train moving, but it is starting to move. It's a good direction, and we're gonna keep going and keep expanding our communication with the community and employees. So we're really striving to work on that. Website is also a big part of that, so we have engaged Revise. We are leaving Civic Plus behind, and we've engaged Revise to build us a new website. That process has started. We hope that, they are building everything as we speak, working with our IT director, Sue Mulberg, to get that up and running. And hopefully, three to six months, we'll start seeing the new website come to light on the, for the town. This is gonna be much easier to use, much easier to update. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of improvements on our website as far as, again, getting more information out there and being user-friendly to the residents that are trying to look at it and use it. Again, we're using ARPA funds for that, so really, really good use of the money. And it's gonna save us money overall too, as far as the support fees and technical fees that go along with that. It's gonna save us quite a bit of money over the current website provider. Also too, we are going to be, we're doing a wage classification study right now with Collins Center through a grant that is focusing on our department heads. They're going to update job descriptions, they're gonna do surveys of comparable towns, just to make sure that we're staying competitive, so that we don't lose employees. I mean, right now, towns are poaching other employees. It's really, it's amazing, it's eye-opening. To a point where I actually said to one town administrator, stop trying to poach one of my employees. And he looked at me in surprise, he didn't know that I knew about that, and he's like, oh, okay. I said, stop it. Just don't take my employees away, stop it. So this is really happening out there. So we need to do the best we can to make sure that we're competitive and that we have the employees that we have. We have a wonderful team right now. This town is moving in such a great direction right now. We need to do everything we can to make sure we hold on to these talented folks that we have on board. And what else?
I think that's a great summary. That was, some of that was citizen engagement, some of it was town administration, but all fantastic updates. What can we all do to support the efforts for the citizen engagement, you know, both on social media, Facebook, website? What can the department heads and the committees, what can we do to help you?
Well, just make, just make sure that all the information is accurate and it's clear of what people need to do. Lynn and I answer phone calls all day long from people calling, looking for this department or that department, or they were told this by this department, but they come to this department because they didn't believe what that department said, or it was confusion. So just do everything we can to make sure that they understand on the first phone call what they need to do, where they need to go, who they need to see, what paperwork they need to fill out, because it will help us a lot. And just, you know, keep working with Capital Strategic Solutions, giving them information to get out there. Because that's where they're really getting all the information, is from the departments and the department heads. So anything new that comes up, anything excitement, send me an email, I'll send it to them, or just reach out to them. They're happy when you talk to them and give them updates, because they get it out there. And I think residents are really starting to notice the difference in how we're presenting our Facebook pages, and our social media pages. So that's the best that we can say.
And one other thing, I just wanna remind people, I'm sure everybody is aware of it, just in case you're not. We did pass a bylaw about a year ago that requires recordings of meetings by every committee in town to be posted on, through Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. They don't have to be videotapes, but they have to be recordings of some sort. So we're trying not to hamstring folks if you are technically challenged, or if you just don't, you know, if it's just a hale and hearty group of volunteers, and you don't have anybody who's a, you know, particularly great with video or social media, we've got you covered. All we need you to do is just put a little recorder there, record it, send it to Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. And I definitely don't want anybody, you know, I don't want this to be a pitfall for the unwary and have any committee violating our own bylaw. So I just wanna remind, and I think that's in the spirit of citizen engagement, right? If we're not getting information out there that people can bring themselves up to speed on what committees and, you know, departments are doing, you know, where they can get information. If we're not putting that information out there, then we're gonna reap what we're showing. We're gonna reap people that don't have a level of awareness that's gonna be helpful to them about what's going on in town. And I know, really, it's all of our goal, right, to let everybody know about the good stuff we're doing. We're all doing good work, we just need to let people know about it and give them the information that they can use. So I just wanted to kind of remind, if we're talking about citizen engagement, just to remind folks that that is a bylaw. And certainly, if you need any support from our office, reach out to Ms. Green, and we'll see what we can get you in the way of technical support, or equipment, or whatever, to help you comply with that. Anything else? Mrs. Rain, I know you originally had kind of spearheaded that citizen engagement sub group. Was there anything you wanted to mention, or?
Well, the only thing that I just really did, the website itself is key, and I'd like to be involved with that when it comes time to organizing this stuff. I'd like to use someone's little key, Capital, what's the name of the strategic?
Capital Strategic.
Capital Strategic Solutions.
It is sufficiently ambiguous, maybe, that you really can't necessarily say what they do. So, okay, that's awesome. And Mrs. Diaz, I'm being blinded right now, but I know you are representing the Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. And, which I always wanna call cable, but I know it's not. And I know that you've got some good resources there for committees in, you know, for the town to utilize. And I didn't know if you wanted to kind of speak about that.
Absolutely, yeah, we do have a lot of resources, and there's a lot more we could be doing in Hanson in highlighting what's happening in Hanson, and then putting it on the cable channel, so that people know what's happening in town halls, so that they can go and say maybe into the Floodboard's office and find out exactly what happens there. Find out what happens, what resources are available, maybe like if we interviewed somebody on the water out, or on the planning committee, on the conservation, explaining, just, you know, interview, what they do and how this is done. Maybe get more people engaged in wanting to do that. But I think it's, and businesses, local businesses as well.
I think that, I love the idea of the, maybe, you know, interviewing people about the different committees, because one of the things that we run into, and we're running into it again this year, is where we have openings, and people just aren't very clear about what does that committee do? Is this a lifetime commitment? Do I have to get my secondborn child? Like, what's the level of commitment that they're requiring? You know, and nine times out of ten, you know, if it's like, say, community preservation, it's, you know, once a month, and it's like three hours of delightful, you know, discussion with people from all these different committees and boards that are like working on these projects, and it's three hours, and it's awesome, and you're gonna feel good about getting back to the community. And I don't mean to pick on community preservation, but it was one of my favorite committees I ever served on. And, you know, similarly, you know, there are other committees, like, I know Capital Improvement Committee. I mean, with the public, it's tough, you guys are meeting really, really, you know, like, you may have to meet more frequently. But again, it's not a lifetime commitment, you don't have to give up all of your, you know, extracurricular activities to be part of that committee. And I think sometimes people are thinking, oh my gosh, I don't know if I've got the time. But it's a really great way to give back to the community, and you learn something. And as in almost every volunteer opportunity, I think you give back more than you give. That's just my two cents worth, at least that's what I tell myself on a daily basis. So, you know, I think that that would be a great way for us to kind of educate people. Oh, what is that conservation commission? Because I know Mr. Clemmons came and talked to us about adding some, you know, some associate members, which we think is a great idea. Well, that's gonna be three potentially new members in training kind of thing. And it would be great if we had a little video, if people said, geez, I might wanna apply, but I don't even know what the conservation commission does. Well, here we go, here's the handy little link to an interview with Mr. Phil Clemmons about what the conservation commission does. There you go. So that's great. Now, how do we go about doing that, Ms. Diaz?
What, maybe?
Yeah.
You could call and talk to Eric, and I'm sure we could set something, especially with training. So video orders are very, very simple to use, and we can make sure they're accessible. You literally just press the button, set down the video, it's that easy. And there can be instructions, and how to upload it. It's very, very easy for people to do if they don't want a camera in the room.
Okay.
And it doesn't make it easy, because I don't know what nights people need, so I would never know when a plane boy's meeting. And this way, they could find it, they could find it on YouTube.
Okay, that's awesome. And Mr. Weeks, did you guys have anything you wanted to add about citizen engagement? Or what's what you're hoping for us to get out of this, or, no? Okay.
Can I just add? Yeah, I recently saw on Facebook a really well-done poll for volunteers for the senior center. I couldn't figure out who put it out, but it was extremely well-done, and saying, we need people that could do this or do that.
I think that was our new little social media campaign.
Yeah.
They just have a good way of spinning things. They just have a way of kind of spinning it and catching you, and, yeah, an interesting way of portraying the information. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything? You know, Robert, I have to say, for instance, I don't mean to get familiar with you, but Mr. O'Brien, Chief O'Brien. I think the fire department does a great job of engaging and telling people what's going on, which is important, right? And similarly, the police do a great job of doing that. And I'd really like to see us, you know, library does a great job, senior center does a great job. We have a lot of people doing a really good job of getting the information out there. Now, we just wanna make sure that we're consistently reliable, so it's not just you guys that are really good, but it's everybody.
So I was gonna ask, but I was gonna do it offline, but I must ask for everybody, is, just is that gonna be great? IT and guy that can do all that stuff in-house, would we be able to send PSAs to the community access?
You'd send it to the portal.
Okay. And they'd be able to upload it to the, okay. Okay.
Okay, great. Ms. Dawn, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I think we'll get out.
Yeah, sure. So, thanks for inviting me to join you tonight, and it's very, it's exciting to hear about all the progress and updates since the last time this group met. But, and also, there were some interesting questions and next steps and ideas that came out of this discussion. And in the spirit of getting things done, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have the two groups. And one will be the community engagement group, and there's some other ideas, and I know, and I'm gonna ask our past facilitators of those discussions, Ms. Rain and Mr. Weeks, to play that role again in these groups. A couple of things that I, you know, I heard that I just wanna like summarize. One was trying to, the interconnectedness, you know, is thinking about, you know, even as this plan that Mr. DeFrias, you know, presented, there were, you know, regardless, like, it's a placeholder, the idea that, it's like, what are the other next steps that might be, that feed into this? Like, what are some other areas that, several of you had some ideas that seemed like it would be great to kind of, in the future, like, map out, like, almost like a, you know, the project plan? And there's so many other activities and planning activities, like particularly with the land use plan that's coming up, and how those things interrelate. But there's definitely a lot of knowledge in this room that can sort of help play into that. Again, this is about the interdisciplinary planning part of this. And then with citizen engagement, you know, citizen engagement has like a pretty, you know, it's a pretty big agenda. And it's exciting to see that people are starting to look at the website, and there's more eyes on it. And also, there's opportunities to talk about, for example, talking about- talking about the, you know, how to improve people and telling folks about the various committees and openings. But there were also other ideas that came up that could contribute to that as part of this, our last session. And so what I'd like to do is to ask, I think maybe the easiest thing is just to decide which side of the table folks are like, I'm just going to say, because Tony, you're sitting over there, I'm going to say this is the facilities. And if Mr. Weeks could come over to the side of the table and facilitate that discussion, anybody who wants to participate in that, again, it's about, you know, other next steps that might be required to kind of bring this sort of planning process to the next stage. And then the other is for communications. And I'm, I'm going to pop in and listen, but, and just sort of think about what are some other items that there's next steps on. And I do recall from the last session, there were some great ideas that came up that need some traction.
And how much time are we going to have?
I think, I would say like 30 minutes. Yeah, that seems like a, okay. All right. All right. So what I'm going to ask is that somebody from your group, whoever you want to designate, or the chairs can report out, just report out what some of the next steps you identified in each, you know, each, I'm going to each group. And I want to start with, I'll call it the Public Facility Summit and ask to, to light the discussion and...
We need your time.
What? Yeah. So who's going to, who's going to report out?
Joe Campbell.
Where is Joe Campbell?
Joe, come on.
We'll scan him away.
Here he is.
There he comes.
They want Joe Campbell to report.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was me. Two chose?
Yeah. Yeah.
Joe, you're going to give her like a, you took copious notice.
Copious? Thank you.
And if you could just give us a summary of what needs discussed.
Sure. So as far as the facilities go, kind of a mission statement would be to strategically repurpose existing town of Hanson buildings with all stakeholders' input. Some of the main topics that we talked about are identifying existing structures that we know that we already have. 1055 Main Street, that's the old fire station, talking about Hox Ave. There's always been talks about Hox Ave, talking about the condition of the Town Hall, High Street, the extension off of 228, which is the form, which is the food pantry, beekeepers, Nurseville, but in the front, not in the back, in the front. The library itself, looking to expand, the Bonny House and the former Police Department on, on, Indian history. So in some of these topics about identifying the existing structures, what we need to do obviously is, is come up with what the biggest priority. And I think that the town Hanson would agree with us, the biggest priority is investing in our Highway Department. Because our Highway Department really, it's a drop in the bucket. So talking about some of the plans that Mr. De Frey has come up with and really trying to get some fruitful activity out of that. As far as what that would do for us is, I was saying, drop in the bucket. So we have an immediate need, a day one need. We do have an immediate need that apparently all departments share, and that's a storage issue. So that can be resolved extremely fast by taking the Hox Ave building and forgetting the idea of trying to change that to a, a, a Highway Department and really taking some low costs, some low hanging fruit, and taking the Hox Ave building and turning it into a dry storage area for all departments in town. Hox Ave has two buildings. So we'd be looking at taking one building, getting all the utilities connected again, checking out what the cost would be to the town to do that, but then affording the town the place to have dry storage. Meanwhile, taking the second building in the back, getting up the utilities to that again, and possibly offering it up as a rental space. Somebody was mentioned in, from, was it?
Mass Wildlife.
Mass Wildlife, which is right on the corner from there, to be able to offer it up as a rental, if not even more from there. So that's a day one fix that can happen like that. And then from there, keeping the ball rolling and keeping things going from now until the next few months from now. And, and looking at being able, being able to create certain things for meeting spaces. I know that the library is looking at the community room, trying to expand for a community room. Fire, Fire Chief was explaining that a lot of times he's trying to do training, there's no place, no place for, for training, like, for anything like that. So that would have a community space that has all the technology needed, projector, sound system, to be able to take care of trainings and things like that. Not only just for the Fire Chief, but for anybody else that would be in town, for any departments to do any kind of a training. As far as the former PD station goes, same kind of a thing, looking at, looking into that as an annex, office space, as well as up on High Street. Recent reports about the existing condition of our Town Hall, when that goes into a repair status, those employees are going to need a place to go. So looking at the existing structure, the existing structures that we have, being able to do some rehab now, to be able to get those places up to, up to par, so that the staff from the Town Hall can annex to another building while Town Hall potentially goes through a rehab and some repair. I think everybody is in agreement. And then to Mr. Clemmons, I think everybody's in agreement because this is a great way to describe the Bonny House. It's the historic center of Hanson. And that's the way that that should be promoted from now on as a PR campaign about that site. Because that site actually will become a small, sturdish village of Hanson. So absolutely, I think everybody's in agreement with that, to become an education resource and, and basically come, become our historic hub of our own town here. So that's the, the goal that we kind of sat down and we were discussing with, with us, kind of echoing what we've been saying for a long time, and that is that the Highway Department should be priority number one. Thanks, good job.
So I'm, I'm wondering, just so one more time about this four months from now, about making any forward progress. I'm wondering, the dry storage, what are our next steps to get that cracking? What, what do you see as the next steps? I'm kind of looking at you, Charlie.
Looking for maybe getting green, communities get in there, stop doing solar panels or so we don't have to power it up by wire or anything else. See what we can get in there, make it work.
All right. So you work with Ms. Green and see what kind of grants, what kind of money we're looking at cost-wise and, and then circle back. It would be ideal if we might have some kind of proposal for October Town Meeting to get, if we need funding, to get that by October Town Meeting. Does that seem like a reasonable goal or?
Yeah. So we know, we know that municipal, we know that utilities are there on the ground. So whether it be gas, water and electric, they are there. So it's a matter of just being able to tap back into those. Now, for that to become a dry storage facility that's feasible for all departments, it would have to be heated. So that's a point that the Fire Chief was talking about, was that it would have to be heated. He's got sensitive materials that need to stay at certain temperatures. But that's actually a big PR plus for that other second building. It's a heated storage. So that's huge. In addition to that, bringing in a municipal fiber connection right from the Police Department, which is down the street. I don't know how the MPTA would play into that. But if we got a municipal internet connection into that building on our municipal fiber network, you'd then have town municipal data. You could put in remote phone system, IP phone system, and all the security cameras could feed to wherever you needed to feed into. So those are some capital improvements that we could put into that space.
Sorry, just got a quick question. Do you necessarily need the power to start storing stuff in there, right? So like, for example, before the winter time, would you need, you would need power to start storing stuff in there now, essentially, right?
Is that because of the fire suppression?
You'd need fire access.
You'd go indoors and things like that.
Yep.
So would you need power?
I may not have to heat the whole space. Just like, how much space the Fire Chief would heat. In other words, if, for discussion purposes, say the building is 2,000 square feet, he only needs 1,000, then, you know, put a partition.
A divider.
And just, and just heat that.
Maybe the front top, the front third of that building is already kind of partitioned off.
Yep.
Separate areas so that you can heat that front part.
Okay.
Block washers.
And is it, everybody says that we ought to have facilities, I hate to use the C work committee, because this seems like a lot of pent-up demand. And I don't know that we really, we've got a lot of volunteer committees doing bits and pieces, like, you know, Historic might be doing something with the Highway Committee. But I just feel like, you know, nobody's really ever been, poor Charlie, looking at Town Hall and some of the other buildings. And it just seems to me like we need a holistic view, right, of priorities. Otherwise, we could have some, five different committees coming to us for our Town Meeting asking for funding. And we don't, we don't have any vetting of what a priority is.
I just got to, I think Charlie seems like a pretty smart guy. And I think, you know, if we have, you know, committee sounds like a great idea, but we, you know, it could also prove to spin him in different directions where he can see you focus on something that he feels is important. You know, there's always people in town willing to complain about, you know, the condition of the buildings and things like that.
Wow.
So, you know, I, I don't know about the committee part of it, because I think it would might hamstring him in his.
Yeah, okay. So maybe, Mr. Baker, you could work with Ms. Green and figure out, you know, and then bring it to the select board on how you think that that might work. But as a first preliminary thing, I think getting that, that storage, that, that's awesome. All right, thanks, Ian. Sorry, I just wanted a to-do.
Oh, no, no, excellent.
Excellent. That's great.
Ms. Rain? So we talked about, mainly talked about filling committee seats, trying to get more involvement from the townspeople, the various committees, and defining committees and defining roles on the committees, and getting that out in video format or on a website that explains what each committee does and, you know, who populates it, who heads it, et cetera. Trying to define that for people so they can go, go and find out, do I really want to be on the historical committee? Do I want to be on the zoning board of appeals? You know, defining that properly. Let me wait a second. I just, I, it's kind of, sorry. One of the problems that we have with getting people to volunteer is what I noted down is dealing with online innuendo and trying to help people deal with, you know, you do something and then you get snapped at and then they all pile on. And either you, like, I, I like to say that I have the height of a rhinoceros, but not everybody has that, you know. So we have to try to find a way of mentoring people so that they can deal with these, the online attacks that are going to come no matter what you do. We talked about how we're going to advertise on the website and on cable. Arine was saying that we could, what is it, the bulletin board or?
Bulletin board.
Put it up on the bulletin board so that it shows up on the cable channel. Not everybody has cable, but a lot of people do. And I know a lot of elderly people that do watch them. It's a Channel 9. Yep. They watch Channel 9 all the time. They're watching our meetings. They are actually, that's the other thing, is the committees that don't put their meetings online, that has to stop. We're going to try to find a way of, I don't know.
Encouraging.
Encourage, first encouraging and then we're going to shame. We want those meetings online. We want, we want people to be able to go and get the information that they're, we don't want them making up innuendo. We want them to get the facts of what is actually going on in the Board of Health, in the Zoning Board of Appeals or whatever, whatever committee you want to bring up. Advertising in the Whitman Hansen, doing more with the Whitman Hansen Express. I know that they love to have little blurbs to put in there. So we need to come up with more blurbs. Like, we have these committees, I had my announcements tonight, had a list of all the committees that we need filled. That should be in the express so people can see what we need to have filled. And the last thing we talked about was using the water bills and the tax bills to put a slip in there that has this information. That goes to everybody. If we could put one piece of paper in that tax bill, it's not going to up on, it's not going to cost more postage, which is very expensive. The only expense you're going to have is, I don't know how they send out these bills. Nobody seems to know. Do they use a company? You know, what, what would the company charge us to put another piece of paper in? Not sure of what. But try to get, get the information out there so that everybody can participate if they want to. And hopefully they will want to. So that's what we talked about. Yes.
Prior to COVID, in one of the select board meetings, I suggested volunteer fair, a job fair.
Yes.
And, and I offered up the community center.
That's why I remember that.
So, you know, everybody would have a table and then they would, people could come in and find out about you, talk to them, what we do. And I think some people are like, they want to help out, but they don't want to be there five days a week.
Right. Well, that's, they have to know what the commitment is, the time commitment and everything.
And what's involved.
Right.
Whereas some committees, it's a lot more responsibility than like, say, being a volunteer collaborator.
Exactly.
Minimal.
Do you have a, 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 like a job fair at the?
I'm wondering if we could incorporate that into Hanson Day somehow, have like a session at Hanson Day that would have like some information about volunteer committees.
From the, yeah, because I know Karen does well as our volunteers for the library. There's a lot of seniors taking part in the plan they have. But like the foundation, we used to have a lot of volunteers, but people leave for whatever reason. And COVID couldn't have anything. And it is like in all committees, the same people doing the same thing and people are getting tired.
Yes, they do. I know.
That was, you know, I mean, it could really work well with G of all too.
Right. So we have to make a note of that.
We had an Hanson Day.
That's a good idea.
We threw up a Town Hall open house, right? With like department heads and volunteer opportunities competing. What could possibly go wrong with this now? Maybe, maybe we do that, something like that, just to kind of.
No, it's a good idea. Do we do it in the summertime? Do we do it?
Too many people are there.
Yeah.
Sometimes that loses people.
Well, losing people and then, it's probably Hanson Day is probably the best idea.
Yeah.
Probably that timeline, because the kids are back to school.
Yes, September.
Yeah, exactly.
Great job.
That's pretty cool.
I just want to quickly add, you know, we talked about earlier about community engagement. I myself am probably a member that's been on the management board, has been viscerated by somebody to come in to, you know, give us a hard time. So, you know, we did a couple of, some would say to me, you know, so how do you feel about being in the town of Clay? You know, you know, I don't know, if, if I have thick skin, you know, that scares people away. Because, you know, for us, I'm one of these boys, we get a lot of abuse. So I guess my question, can we, you know, the policy required by, you know, like if someone comes into a planning board meeting, conservation meeting, there should be some kind of conduct behavior. And if they don't comply with that, they should be passed a few rules. You know, we, you know, those people, residents of Hanson, I just, but I wonder if we have a policy that would make it like better for people to be willing to volunteer.
Fortunately, one of the bad things about that is that freedom of speech trumps everything.
Unfortunately, yeah.
So no matter what kind of meetings we have, if it's a public hearing, different story from a public meeting. So Mr. Kemp's point is absolutely a stupid one, Frank. Everybody that works on that Town Hall, we, we can do a better PR campaign to, to make sure that we go against the rain. We can fight no one attended. We can fight fire with fire. We can, we can fight fire with fires, you know. Get back down into the schools, educating kids, showing them what we do and why we do. You know, that's, but as far as what Mr. Kemp was talking about, unfortunately, freedom of speech, actually.
Well, that's what I was talking about too, is what the, what I call the online innuendo. I mean, the attacks that you can endure on Facebook are ridiculous.
It's free to make a thing happen.
If you have thick skin, you know, if you, if you don't, you fight back. But then you can create even more problems. So, you know, I would like.
Well, I think, you know, all of a sudden, you know, like, you know, social media is one thing, but we have to deal with that same type of.
In the world, yeah.
In the world.
I know, I know.
So that's really where I was going with it. It's like, is there a possibility?
Well, if they're totally online, they could be tossed, I'm sure.
Not so much.
Yeah.
You're giving over reasons.
The other thing that might help with folks being engaged, especially if, let's say, looking for a younger crowd to get engaged, is the state is allowing hybrid meetings until 2025. And I think for a lot of people, you know, the hectic schedule, being able to say, attend a meeting virtually, for instance, I'm a delegate to calling planning council, and they have their meetings virtually. they have their meetings virtually, and that's how I attend. Because I can, I can go from my, I can go from my office, my house, my living room, and have the meetings, like, it makes it a lot easier, if you can access meetings virtually.
That's a great point, Tony, that's a really great point. Something does get lost when you're not in person, but, but if you can engage more people, yeah, definitely. Chief O'Brien, sorry, I didn't see you.
No, actually, just remembering two things. One, probably deals more on the employee side than necessarily with the commissions, but I was at Abington Town Hall last week, and I can't remember exactly what it said, but right on the front doors of town hall, it's basically under a tall, like, contact. And it wasn't stated that way, but it basically said that, you know, good behavior, bad behavior, not to be followed, kind of thing, and it, you know, for a very reasonable person, you know, that all of a sudden they get heated or something, they see that, okay, take a breath before they go ahead, overfill or something they don't like or whatever. But the second thing, just to echo what Tony says, is bringing that up to people, because while you are missing something with the hybrid, it has made it a lot easier for a lot of committees and things I said on statewide, that I don't travel, frame again, things like that to me, or it's get on the computer and do it. And it's much easier when you tell people, hey, you don't have to necessarily be in the room, you can, you can video win. And I was going to ask that question too, does the town have a Zoom account, WebEx account, anything like that?
We do.
We do.
Yeah, we still have.
And that'd be something, I'm just throwing that out there, that, you know, a resource for all the committees and things like that.
Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry.
I just could say, where it comes to conduct, or how you control, or how you invite creative spaces on, I think there might be, I'm just going to say this, as chair of conservation, maybe a little more solid training available for people to run, maybe people chair, maybe people chair hearings, because we have some very full, well, we try, because first of all, we emphasize that this meeting is being recorded for the record, and all the members of the commission and all the members of the public should keep that in mind. But also, just the way we conduct our meetings and our hearings, it should be in a way that encourages people to participate, but in the right way, and let them know that if it's maybe very badly, that's on the record, and I don't know who gets it, it's shown on cable TV or community TV, but I think that we can not only discourage, encourage the good, and maybe a little more training than what we get through whatever means we already have, for training of people how to conduct a meeting, because if you're chairing, it's your meeting, and there may be points where they hit the button on the table, or who, who got your, but maybe that might have a meaning. But, yeah.
Mr. Green, I'm wondering if there is some type of MMA or some other, must she something like, how to deal with difficult personnel in hearing or meeting?
Laura, there's a webinar, regulating comments at public meetings, legal and operational perspective, coming up on Monday, June 5th, MMA.
Oh, I have that one, so that's because of the Supreme Judicial Court case.
Right.
Which, which gets back to the fact that people have first amendment rights, I know, but to Mr. Clement's point, somebody could properly chair meetings so as to mitigate the possible damage that somebody who might be intended on doing damage would have. So it's a delicate balance. We do want to, of course, preserve a constitutional rights, we all enjoy them, one greater enjoy them, not abuse them.
You made the point saying, this is called a here, that means we want to hear you.
Right.
We're not going to say things that expect you to listen to, it's two-way thing, but everyone would get in here, and even if it's not tonight, you might continue to say, next meeting, this meeting, make information, yeah, I think there's a lot to hear, but please bring your comments and questions to people later on, so by the next session, and everyone would get the chance.
And I would encourage, Mrs. Green, I know if you had a chance, Senator Aronson, the members and heads, that the MMA invited, it's an open invite, it doesn't cost me to attend, it's an hour, I think it's in 12, and it just will lay out the, you know, Supreme Judicial Court, and what that decision was, and kind of what to keep in mind, it's based on our case, and I think it was self-organized, and so it's just important. Now, same question to you, Mrs. Rain, what is our meeting to do? What's our meeting deliverable, and how we're going to do it? I know you said you were going to look into the insert, you're going to talk to the treasurer collector, and look into the insert, into the water, and, and tax bills, that's, it seems like a good first step. And what else?
I'm still, I'm still waiting for bones of that website. I want to see how that's going to be organized, and so that it's easy for our townspeople to find information. That to me is, that's the basis of everything.
And then, I'm wondering, and I'm looking at you, Mrs. Bell, and my close friend taking me to the table, is, I'm wondering if we could start very slowly, by thinking, what committees and boards frequently have openings? And is there a way for us to work with the chairs or the department heads and those, to come up with a description of what that committee does? Or perhaps it's already on there, and we just need to repurpose it and put it someplace a little bit more visible, while looking for openings? So I know you've got a list that you, Mrs. Rain, ran tonight, of the openings that are currently up, maybe we start with those, I don't have any improvement, conservation, CBA, I think historic commission, just a good little smattering of them, maybe we could start with those. And again, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel, all the towns across Massachusetts, and perhaps even the United States, have had various iterations of these committees and boards, we can even, you know, we can easily plagiarize and tweak a little bit and get there, and I don't think it would be super heavy lifting. So I think those would be a good few things. So, we're going to try to plan on our next meeting sometime mid-October-ish. Lynn, you're going to get minutes to everybody, so that we kind of all know what we said we wanted to work on. The board of select will take on their advisory, whether we think we need, how we're going to work with Mr. Baker on the facilities, and Mr. Baker, you're going to work with Ms. Green on the Operation Cold George. I don't know if you can speak, it sounds more possessive.
Dry storage, Charlie.
Alright, and then, and then what would you do to work, you know, with Ms. Green and with capital strategic solutions on the website? Is there anything else that he has to say? Maybe he can have a schedule meeting. That's perfect, that's great. Alright, so mark calendars, October 17, and, mark it here, here, yep. Anything else that anybody wanted to cover?
Yeah, actually, something I wanted to throw out, it was something I had in a few discussions with a few different board members, from different boards in town hall, and I think it's actually something we do need to encapsulate quickly. With the impact, and I would throw it out there that you should call it, like, an impact some committee, with the impact that we're getting ready to get hit with in regards to some of the 40B development, the MBTA, I know it's just a zoning, but if it was to be developed, with the impact of what we're going to have with these different developments that are coming out, there's going to be more. I, Mr. Clement's made a great point, that 55-plus committee not as impacting on the school departments. However, internally inside the town, I think that we do need to have some stakeholders from land use, if they, you know, whatever, wherever, wherever we're being, that would be important, to be able to sit back and look and see just exactly the financial impact of what some of these developments are going to have on our town. Last town meeting, we accepted two roads, or we accepted a road, but we have another road that's coming before town going through the whole process now of deeds and registrations and others. So that acceptance of this past town meeting, that is going to have an impact on the town with fees and costs. So I think that by having those, it gives us a good litmus test to be able to see what are the financial requirements of some of these decisions that we are making at town hall. I think that at this last town meeting, was there a possibility that a decision was made that really sandbagged the town into more of a financial debt? Absolutely, 100%. We didn't have the opportunity to be able to stretch it out, to see, it wasn't fast enough for us to be able to project out a road and see what was going to, what does it cost the town to do a taking or make a street for a private public, as well as the impact of the 40Bs on send the fire department to police department. Some of this stuff has heavy and heavy regulations, so there is going to be, are you really thinking we should have an impact, an impact some committee on some of these major decisions about how that's going to play out in five years, 10 years from now?
So, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So how would you envision this? Like, as those projects come up, then maybe, like, at a joint meeting, or it's meeting on an ongoing basis, or? And the second question, Mr. Current Kincher, have you seen anything like this in other towns to be dealt with?
Uh, no, directly, but I have talked to some town administrators, like, that kind of do, who said, they have some models and stuff, financial models for development, you know, they have schools and this and that, so, again, plagiarization, like, if there's a 40B, I think it's easier to have a specific project and analyze that instead of, like, oh, this, oh, this, there's going to be 40B developments, and we're creating 100 blah blah blah, and I think from that, that we can probably come up with a financial impact.
Yeah, I think that, I think what the dangers of that is that everybody gets hyper-focused on just the 40B, they don't go and look and see, how does it affect fire? And then fire can come in with, by having a few different stakeholders across the town, fire can come in, I would never think that EMS would be strapped, I would think that the fire engine would be much more strapped, you know, but, so there's different departments, so taking it from that side of, getting a little bit higher, see a better town line impact.
Yeah, so maybe just like, like, 40B impacts, like, everybody in the other county, buildings, got the fire, police and stuff, like, water.
Water.
Just, just huge. Yeah, so just saying, how is this project going to affect your resources in your department? Initial step, and just take all that information together, because you have all the experts, subject met experts, and just something to facilitate that whole discussion, put it all together in one impact, or total impact.
I don't know, we have department head through the town district, but I just wanted to put it out there for town, basically.
If I may add, I think if you're, I'm looking at a commission study, written report, whatever point, maybe in five years, 10 years, that different metrics in there, if population is X, and five years later it's Y, what does that do to the overall budget? And where would we be five years from now in terms of a total total budget? If we're at round figures, $35 million at town population today, providing services from the town, five years from now, if that's population plus 20%, what does that, those numbers correlate to?
Yeah, I, Ms. Green and Mr. Current Kincher, I'm wondering if the Madden report that we've commissioned, if there's some way to either have some kind of a tool that you can give us that we could use, or give us some metrics that we apply as these numbers come into? You guys can do that, if not necessarily, like, I don't know, you'll have to look back and ask Ken, and then, Mr. Wallace, did you do anything?
Yes, I just had a question. So I don't think the, I mean, finance is obviously important, but compliance is just sort of most of people, so, for example, like, it'd be great to know if our park, if this 40B came, we would make an X amount more dollars of revenue, but we have to buy new end units, or we have to get two more police officers and cars, so, you know, I don't know, is there a committee that you can, not necessarily a voting committee, more like a discussion committee, that would have, like, planning board chair, fire chief, police chief, and they would write essentially a, just an impact statement, this is what would happen, and then would go to the various committee, the planning board, conservation, it wouldn't be like a vote to approve, vote to, it would just be like a discussion, and set off that one.
Wasn't there something like that in Braintree, like, something?
Yeah, and, you know, what they used to do, is all the plans were required, full agency permits for, you know, any kind of development, that impact report was done, so, you know, and you can, like, decide what part of that impact you want, and you can say, this is what I want, I want to know what these costs, and how it affects everything in the whole. But I don't know, from a legal perspective, or how they did, and, but all of the land use boards met regularly from, you know, super meeting, and those were the discussers, you know, okay, if you allow this, you know, 50 unit complex to be built, what's the impact on the town long-term, short-term, you know?
Well, so I, would you allow us the opportunity to put that on select board agenda?
Absolutely.
And then we'll invite various groups, and we can talk about it further and see, but I think that that cross-pollination and sharing of information, which is what we're all about here, that's a perfect place for that to happen.
It doesn't have to be as strictly about finances. One of the things that I was blown away by with COVID, what was the impact on COVID to the boroughs of town? The foot traffic that is down there now is unbelievable.
It's 25 times greater than it was before.
Yeah.
Which means 25 times more dogs are too.
Yeah, yeah. So the impact on that, it's, you know, the impact, that kind of stuff like that, what was the impact for the boroughs of town, it's not so much Hanson's responsibility, but these are the things that we don't see coming out into the woodwork economy, I hope they're being discussed, but they're leaving us.
I did just, I was a little remiss at the beginning, I meant to introduce our new select board member, David George, who's sitting right next to Mrs. Rain. He's a rose between two thorns, he's between. He's lucky he survives. So I welcome him and look forward to working with him, and he's very active with the American Legion in trying to help revitalize those guys there, and they need all the support that they can gather, so we welcome him and look forward to working with him, and, I did, can I just close in, Ryan?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I, this was great, I'm sorry, we kind of overstated, I welcomed a little, and, you know, went a little longer than normal, but I think when we get all of you lovely people in a room, and everybody's so passionate about what they're doing, and you're spending so much of, whether it's you're doing it as your job or as a volunteer, you know, you're living and breathing this, and let's, let's face it, folks, this doesn't make for, you know, like, hark to banter, so, you know, we're probably amongst the only people that really want to hear about this from one another, so, you know, I really appreciate all the work that you all are doing every day, I really feel extremely grateful for you guys spending the time here, for all the work that you do, I love seeing people meeting people and cross-pollinating and sharing ideas, because that's the best of us. So, I thank you so much, and mark calendars for October 17, and I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to say.
Yeah, it was lovely.
Yeah, it was great. Alright, thank you so much, guys.